If I can have everyone stand, please join us and say "Pledge."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of this country, and to this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Josh Lee, I have to say the chairs are nice.
Thank you. Better than the picnic table.
And as it changed to our normal agenda, it looks like we have a guest speaker this evening, Mr. Rick Brown from MS4. We're going to start off with you this evening. Would you like to approach the podium?
As the past season rounds, you've probably seen them before inside of life. They're going to have to just give you a few here. You've got to wait, and I think there's plenty.
What are your plans to be...
It's a nice speaker. Nice to see you all again.
You too, as well.
Basically, I'm here to discuss, I want to say beautify it a little bit because I don't know what other word to use, consideration of beautifying with nice plants at the dog park area. Now, I understand it doesn't have to have it. However, Mr. Doyle's drawing, if you look at that first page, by where the staple is up on the top left, you will see a little curved walkway. My assistant basically searched around and was able to find that colored picture of what you'll see of a curved walkway that would be similar in some nature. Mr. Doyle and I, and Katie and I, we've had some discussions on this. Now, I think that this could beautify it some, but I want to explain the process. MS4 would be willing to pitch in funds for this. And I've also, if you guys like the idea, I've also discussed this project with the SWCD education coordinator. She will, if you say we'd like to proceed with it, she will be applying for a coastal grant for this project. There will be no funds required from you folks. The equipment that you use to pull off dirt and that kind of stuff, that could be counted as in-kind match versus funds from you. I don't think this is going to be a very costly project either, but that's a way where we can work with Mr. Doyle and grant a $5,000. And it's not going to cost you anything, just your in-kind match. Now, MS4 would pay also money for it. And in doing this, the grant would be written by Nicole Massacre. She's done many coastal grants. That would have to be done in September to get funds for, maybe possibly the spring in 2020. If we wait until next year, it'd be 2021 money. So I'm here to talk about this a little bit and answer any questions you may have. I think, you know, Katie may have said something in the last meeting about it. I think they could kind of beautify it nicely. It wouldn't be exactly like this, but I think you could make them look pretty different in total. And I, we all have to have a little skin in the game. That would keep it nice. You folks would have to keep maintaining it, you know, every year maintain it, cut the weeds and all that kind of stuff. So really, that's the only things we have to do to get the ball rolling on this. And to get the ball rolling, I didn't want to be barking up a tree, so I'm here to see if you guys are even interested in this project and moving forward under that scenario.
Mark, excuse me. Mark, did I go and put in native Indiana planting stuff in that part?
Yes, yes.
What section of the park was you thinking about this week going through, something like this?
That little curved walkway that you see would go between that existing parking area and then the front of the dog park.
Oh, the existing park. Okay, I see what you're saying. Okay, yeah.
They're not really wet ones, but they're, those are all cattails that goes through the way.
It's a damp area. It's a damp area.
So it's wet with Jason?
Yeah. And you aren't able to cut cattails without any worry from idiom or decorum engineer or anything like that. You can't cut cattails. They kind of beautify it some, but probably my easiest, which are, they got the dark combing top looking things that are tall like cattails. Those are very, very basic. We'd like to use those if they're out there somewhere. I'm just kind of rounding the project off without using too much air that we're operating here and see if you guys are interested in it.
So have you looked at what the costs would be for the project in total? I mean, I know that would be grant funded, it sounds like, for the most part, but...
Yeah, well, yeah, it would be grant funded. I don't have a firm cost, but I'm, in talking with Nicole, I believe we can do this project for under $75,000.
Rick, good question.
Yes, sir.
The path, is that five store or is that stamped concrete?
It was a picture or on the... I think John had...
What would we do with the drawing?
I think John had wood chips.
We would just do wood chip. We wouldn't do a stamped concrete?
No, I'm not sure yet exactly what we would do or not do. I want to see you guys rent or I said, "Yeah, I'd like to paint it now." And I'm not trying to be coy. I've just not done a lot of pricing yet, only in talking with Nicole, from her and stuff, the native plants and that kind of stuff.
Okay, so it'll be grant funded through not only MS4, but also Solid Waste, correct?
Not Solid Waste.
Oh, Slow &amp; Water, okay.
Yeah, yeah. It'd be Nicole, and, you know, if it's $10,000, if it's $6,000, whatever it is, it is. Because MS4 could have paid its portion, which would probably be a majority of that. But also, remember the in-kind. The in-kind is kind of nice for you guys. You might have a certain amount of skin in game. I'm not trying to be, you know, negligent or impervent, but you kind of got to want to do it too, you folks got to want to do it. I don't want to bring anything down your throat, but I'm just trying to see if it's going to be workable for us.
And as far as in-kind, that would just involve us moving maybe some dirt around for you or...
Yeah, yeah, whatever it is we're going to have to do, whatever we could use your equipment for, that would all be counted as in-kind work. So the more we use the equipment, the more it counts as in-kind from you folks.
Correct. So this I'm going to defer to Mr. Bruder, because that's his department. We don't like to overcommit.
Once we get a plan of what they want to do...
Then you'll know what you can.
Yeah, we can go from there and see what equipment we have, what's going to be, if it's going to help, then, you know, that's great. If we can help.
And I, you know, I'm hesitant to do exact pricing.
Sure, sure.
If you guys need to understand. So, we had intended to put wood chips and so forth as far as that walkway, or would that be, if we did that, would that be considered in-kind work? I would think anything that you guys offer, we could make it in-kind.
Okay.
You know, I don't know your financial situation, but I'm sure we can do that, because we've done projects before. I don't see any problems with that.
I think it looks very good. I don't see a problem with it.
What's Park Department say back there?
That was going to be my next question.
You like the idea?
Definitely. For, when you keep referring to it in-kind, maybe I'm totally naive to this, does that mean that we need to have certain values of the total project is $10,000? Do we need to reciprocate 50% of that in-kind? Or what's the actual budgeting restraints on that? Or just assist and be part of it in general?
That's what the budget is, assisting and being a part of it. And quite honestly, and again, I'm not, I'm not trying to be rude, but, you know, it's your area, it's your dog park, and you guys have to show a certain amount of interest in wanting to do the project. So if we use your equipment and we work together, whether we use your equipment and that bill would be $1,000, $500, or $2,000, and you've been doing the work for something else, we put that down as in-kind. But we're going to have to get a little, you know, speed up, pace a little bit with the project so we can get this thing filed in September if you're interested.
Right.
You know, we could do it without the grants. I suggest we do it with the grant. And I'm not trying to be rude, but I want to say something as far as that's concerned. You guys will have to be doing the maintenance on it.
Correct.
So if you guys say, "Well, it's going to be on maintenance, we don't want to do it," well, then maybe we stop and look at something else.
Well, we have to maintenance anyway, because they said they were going to put wood chips down, right? We were going to put wood chips and have to maintain that anyway. So no matter what you do, you have to maintain it.
The landscaping.
Is there that much to maintain?
Do what?
Is there that much to maintain?
No. I agree with you. You guys already bow, they're already doing stuff out there. They'll have to be pulled back in dog park fans, and they're going to be that. But it shows a certain, you guys liking it, to maintain it and keep it nice. That's all. That's all I'm trying to say. I'm not very good before the show.
No, and I know from a budget perspective, we're tapped out Park Department this year, but next year, we do have to allocate appropriate beautification and things like that, so we can definitely have, even if it's, if it's equipment that we don't have or something that we can do to assist, we should have some funds.
I think your funding would just be the gas and oil of the equipment, basically, that you would be doing for it. And we could probably, if you guys say yes, I will speed up the pace on this. I'll speed up the pace with Nicole, maybe have to meet yours or whoever you designate, so we can kind of get closer estimates of what we're exactly at. But I don't see the project being that over costly. MS4 could pay for all of it, I'll be honest with you. MS4 could pay for all of it.
Do you mean...
I like the idea of partnering. I like the idea of parking on this project.
You know, we need a...
Yes, we do. We do.
I have another question.
Yes, Mr. Bruder.
So grant gets filed in September?
Yes.
When is it awarded?
Early in 2020, is my understanding.
That was my next question.
Early, it's the end of the first quarter.
Okay.
In that range, I could be off a little bit. I never plowed a lot, but I believe working very closely with Nicole, she's got me. And it works, it's awfully nice to be coastal grant considering our area.
I just didn't want that dropping our laps in the middle of leaf season and expect it to be...
Then I can get more specific answers to some of this stuff if it's going to be a dog park.
All right, so I'll make a motion to accept MS4's proposal to make the beautification on the park, and do I need to include the grant in there?
When they do the proposal, they can proceed with a plan, you know, at that point. I think that would be more appropriate than we would be applying.
So I'm motioning on the proposal.
You can fill through the coastal grant.
Right.
Coastal.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A second on the post.
Yeah, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Thanks, thank you, Rick. Nice work, you people. Good work on the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tech man jumped a foot off the chair.
He's a little excited. Very gently, please, though.
Happy night, everybody.
Thank you very much. All right, so going back to the agenda, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from last month's meeting? If you have not, if you would take a moment just to muck them over. Does anyone have any questions or comments? If there are no questions or comments, if we can have a motion to accept the minutes from the July 16th of 2019 meeting?
Make that motion.
In a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the fund report. It looks like we have two copies this month, Josh?
Should have, but...
Nope, I have one from July. That's okay. I missed to file it wrong in line. Anything that we should be looking at specifically?
I don't know.
If we have no questions or comments, if we can have a motion to approve the fund report?
I'll make a motion to approve the fund report.
Then a second?
A second.
All right, moving on to payment of the bills. Then again, Josh Lee, I may ask if there's anything that stands out that we should know about the password?
No.
Looking through?
The cameras are back working again, Nelson?
Yes.
Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding payment of the bills? If there are no questions or comments, if we can have a motion to approve?
Make that motion to approve payment of the bills.
In a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful. Do we have any correspondence this month? None? We'll move on to reports. Hello, Kate?
Hi, just a couple of things. The drain art, as soon as the splash pad is finished, which I don't have a date for that yet, Ariana, Rick's assistant, will be doing the drain art and videotaping and everything. And she's also changed the training. Remember, last time I was on the laptop and watched the... Well, she's going to do like a couple of minute or two videos. She's got, she has the first one posted on the Facebook page and YouTube, and they'll be sent to us as well. And she's going to do one like every month for the training, and then there's a little quiz afterward after the video that you have to fill out. So she's, you know, getting us a little bit more on the social media spectrum of the training, so which, you know, and if other people visit the site, hopefully, they'll be willing to take the quiz as well.
Okay, so she'll, you or she will send us the links for those?
Yeah.
Wonderful.
I should have it some kind of a Twitter.
Wonderful.
That's really all I have for tonight.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you very much. Mr. Herpock?
The state confirmed and approved our ordinance regarding adopting the State Building Code. What that means is we also need to retain here the common building move. Can you get that for us from the state? I'm sure it's got amendments to it. We need to probably have one here in the office.
Yeah, I'll try and get a little fire market.
Okay. Okay. And I told Josh Lee, we probably need to record that, because they lost the last adoption that we did 25 years ago.
Yes.
That way we have a record of it. Additionally, as you know, the interlocal agreement was executed by the town, and then we sent it to the county. The county wants us to meet with, apparently, the zoning board. However, Josh Lee, in the meantime, advertised for a plumber, and Steve told me tonight that Paul Forman said he would accept the job. So if that's the case, we don't really need, if the council approves Paul Forman as the plumbing inspector, which they could do tonight, then we probably don't need the interlocal agreement with the county, because we'll have all the inspectors filled.
Okay.
And if you want to take that up now or take it up with Steve, talk to him.
So, so he's had a change of heart? And what caused him to suddenly come and decide to... Okay, understood.
I still think it might not be a bad idea to go through the interlocal agreement.
Have a backup.
In case somebody decides they don't want to do the job anymore, then at least we already have it set up.
That would require somebody on the council to appear before the county zoning board with the county commissioners who both accept it.
Okay.
And if you want to, I could probably set up that, get a time and everything.
That's fine. I'll be happy to attend that meeting.
Okay. We filed complaints against, or ordinance violations against two of our residents. Justice doesn't work overnight, and they continued it because of lack of service on the people. But we now have a date for 27th August, that our marshal did serve him. So they haven't noticed, so we should resolve that after that 27th of August. I did already hear from one of the residents who said they fully were going to comply and have it resolved by the date of the 27th, so we'll see if that happens. And that's all I have.
Does one of those include carpeting and out front?
Yeah.
Fantastic. Good evening, Mr. Doyle.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Our paving program is going pretty well. We're basically finished in the Laurel Spruce pine cone area, and then to clean up. So that's, that area is done. Edgemore has been milled, and basically, we're scheduled to pave that on Thursday. Martin Drive between Michigan and Plum, that's up to the point where we put in binder today. So that needs service and cleanup. So I would imagine by the end of next week, we'll be pretty much out of the paving business. The other thing, I don't remember the exact date, but we met with Royce Hammond on our stormwater pumping station, along with Jeff and Scott. Scott was able to get a tanker truck from Cool Spring Fire. Bottom line there was the floats had become tangled one with the other. Once we, Royce basically figured that out, Scott got in the barrel and cut the floats loose. Now, Mr. Bruder got in the barrel.
I did not.
Sorry, I am sorry.
Thank you for the car.
Hey, buddy, I wouldn't have made it back out. I'm sorry, Scott, or Jeff, but anyway, it got taken care of. So everything's good there. Are the faults just the cord or cables holding them up or what's... They're hung from, you know, supports above the, in the structure. These cables were basically ziplocked, I guess, or whatever, together, which, during one of the high water flows in there, the float got turned. It got turned and it's, got tangled with the other float cable, got turned, and that was causing the pumps to cycle within a few seconds. We tested the station as far as discharge and so forth on the money. So that took care of that. I think that's basically all I have for the evening. And on that note, real quick, I would like to thank Mr. Bruder for contacting Chief McPollock from Cool Spring, and Chief McPollock himself for bringing down the tanker truck. We used everything, every bit of 2,000 gallons to test that system out. We still would have been there today if...
If we hadn't guarded those.
Yeah. But no, it went smooth, well coordinated.
It went well, thanks.
Thank you, everyone. Mr. Ganshaw, do you have anything for the Park Department?
Yes. No, Josh Lee, did you provide notes?
You guys gave me some, I didn't provide them to the council.
No, that's okay. I didn't know what the...
Probably email them.
Okay. So Park, the Park Department met last week. Marshal there came out and actually wanted to know if we were going to go into the dog park, and we talked for a bit, but it was in the rain. We need to make sure that we get the keys, all the officers, because they're going to open and close the dog park. Just little things that we need to make sure we get done. We saw the signs, and they're here. Everything looked good, assuming that you've got them out.
I do got, we have got the park, but just very laggy. Yeah, they're not...
So all the signs are there and looked good, and double-checked everything. It has come up a couple of times, which we'll continue to talk about, about maybe putting up some poles in a chain to stop people from parking there overnight at some point, but that will probably be a next year sort of thing. I know Councilwoman Jennifer Heath mentioned the same thing. I think you guys got all the weeds down in kind of the...
They did. I was out there today, it was fantastic. It looks much better.
Yeah, we'll just need the fencing done at some point, too, for...
And that's actually done as well.
Oh, okay. I traded a lot from the street today.
So they actually, not only had they taken all the weeds down around the parking lot and around the fencing, but there, some of these signs and posts inside of the fences are actually already in place.
Awesome. Yeah, I saw those. That's great. I saw that kind of repotting, which is hard to see from the walkway. Awesome. So we decided that there's not going to be a fault fest this year, because we don't really have money. And if we want to have anything done with the dog park grand opening, we kind of have to look at the sponsors that we were already using. I do believe that we got settled on September 7th, which is the Saturday, because you're still okay with your...
Yes, for the grand opening. Would be not September 7th.
You were going to be done by the 7th. Got you.
So probably not seven, just a minute.
Is it time to go back in a mole one more time?
Sure.
Or two more nights?
We just figured you'd be in a mole again, no matter what.
The radiator's Sunday.
There'll be more than enough time to get it done.
What kind of time are we talking about for opening?
We were thinking just that, like, maybe a two-hour timeframe, but...
Times, yeah.
We were fairly open on the time, because there's nothing, we're not going to be food-oriented, you know, so we were saying we could do 11 to 1 or 12 to 2. It was a little open. Our goal was obviously that, we're talking with all the newspapers and everybody to get out there to get some, you know, nice hurrah for everything that's happening, so the more council people that we could get there, and if people want to actually, you know, sign up for the dog park and those sort of things right then and there. So we were kind of open a little bit as far as timeline goes. All the advertisements, since we're trying to do this as a, you know, as fringy as possible and as zero dollars as possible, it's just going to be through social media stuff and through the newspapers, if they'll run anything before us for free as they're trying to get people out. So a lot of it might be after the fact, but that's still good.
We got backup day in case of...
Maybe Sunday?
Yeah, we got Saturday or Sunday. It's, again, it's just one of those things, right, where two people could show up and 100 people could show up, and we just don't really know at this point until it happens. And like we said at the Fall Fest, we had one day of 100, and then the next time, a year to the date later, it was beautiful out in the 70s, so we just don't know. So I don't know, to be honest, I would hope we would have a backup or not, or if it would just be, we'll go from there.
So I would, I would request that we do maybe noon to 2:00 instead of 11 to 1:00.
What was the day on that?
September 7th at noon.
Do you want me to go ahead and do an ad in the paper for that? Or do you want to put something together and email it to me? Because we're, you know, it's 20.
Yeah, Amanda was going to reach out to you anyway about the Facebook stuff, and she was reaching out. She was going to reach out to the News Dispatch, the Beecher, and LaPorte County Life.
Yeah, LaPorte County Life, because the Herald Argus should be in tandem with the News Dispatch.
So I'll have them, we have to reach back out to you and see what we want to do that way, too.
You could get our full list of media contact, too, if you'd like that. It's everybody, you just don't know who's going to take an interest in it. Everybody likes pets.
Yes.
We've got Chicago News, Altman.
That would be fantastic, actually.
If you get press release together, I can get that sent out.
Thank you. The park board members have been reaching out to our sponsors before. They already have been very good in the past to us, which we really, really appreciate it. Apparently, they've gone through some ownership changes, and they did let us know that we might have to go through corporate. have to go through corporate. But I think if we poke them a little bit, they might just donate stuff like they have in the past. Everybody knowing that it's dog related stuff as well this time. Amanda was also going to reach out to Dr. Core to find out if there was anything that they wanted to do. My responsibilities were to reach out to the Humane Society in case they wanted anything, Frank and then PetSmart. And I actually talked with Dr. Bailey, who owns Michigan City Animal Hospital, who's the newest one, and he expressed an interest. Just needed to get a confirmation from him. So it'd be nice to have that there too, just in case. We all really liked the humane show from last time, but then it came up if we have a bunch of dogs running around, then maybe having a. Whatever. It's not the greatest idea. We did toss that around and then quickly we were like, yeah, it's probably not so good. Jennifer Heath said that she's responsible for the next door stuff. So as soon as we get some press release and information with the time, then we can get that posted out there as well. Do we need somebody from the clerk's office to actually sign off?
I would be there that day so I can assist in the.
Yeah, I think with having a table and actually getting people signed up there and anybody that has animals that could possibly sign up before, right, like the council members? Are you going to be there and go?
Yeah, good idea.
And maybe we should bring something to register dogs for the town as well.
We have our registration form done and we already have the tax office.
Perfect. Perfect.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Anybody in the town, right? Because we said we don't have that many dogs registered. We probably have them up for both.
We probably have 45 registered.
Dogs in the town.
What's that? 45 dogs? If you bring your dog from either county, you still have to register it to the town.
Yes.
I mean, not just a red.
For the park.
Oh, just for.
Just for the park, but not as a resident.
I guess.
If they live here and their dogs technically not having a resident, we should have them looking for it, but they.
But they do both at the same time.
Five dollars or whatever it is.
And it's $30 for each dog, $10 for each additional dog.
Yep. And we talked, they've got really nice little green tags already, which I think is nice. So that way if any of the council members or anybody's out there at any time, you know.
If we see a different colored tag, we know.
We also talked over this point about the owner carrying some circle of value received on the person, which we prevent them from having to break that dog and check their tag.
Actually, I did see the Char. She handles LaPorte County, all of LaPorte County parks and their dog tag system, and she just gave them the receipt. Ree and I kind of talked about that a little bit.
Yeah, we'll talk about that later, then it's probably.
Yeah, I think that's a whole discussion.
Enforcement is difficult, so.
Well, we should carry their receipt.
That'll be something for a later discussion then.
The only other thing that we've talked about, which is not necessarily urgent, but something that I will probably talk with Frank and PetSmart about is water. As we said, I think Mr. Doyle had mentioned a long time ago, actually hooking up to city water would cost hundreds of thousands. There's some concerns about whether we can actually get a well in there or, you know, whether the water will test positive. The only thing that I just saw the other day, which I should have brought up before, they have the little hand pumps that you can put on a five gallon bucket, just like you get delivered at your house. So maybe that would be an inexpensive option for somebody that wants to donate to get a little hand pump for a five gallon bucket set out there somewhere. Because it would be a little bit of a shame. I know a lot of people say people bring water anyway, but it would probably be nice to offer something.
I think that's a nice thought. My only concern would be that someone would tamper with that bucket in some way and.
Well, it could be if it's just on the dog park opening day.
Right.
You know, just to add water out.
For the opening day, I can see that might be, would be a really nice thing to have.
Yeah.
But as an ongoing, I can see issues with that.
Yeah.
Potentially arising.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what we talked about, rainwater collection systems, all kinds of different options that would do something.
Okay. What else have we got, Mr. Ganshaw?
That's all I've got for right now.
Okay. Thank you for the update.
Thank you. And I, guys, but I have some kids that are going first day of school tomorrow.
That's okay. We appreciate your attendance.
Thank you. See you.
Mr. Thomas.
Anything I'm going to say with 47?
So we don't have anything for the building inspector. Nice to see you tonight. Anything from planning and zoning?
Nothing.
Nothing? That's you? Okay, nothing. Your release. Hello, Steve.
Hello. Good evening, everybody. Start off real quick. I'm going to try to make this clear. As you know, last month's meeting, I read Sergeant Mosowski's resignation letter. And I failed to point out that we appreciate his nearly seven years of service with seven years of dedicated service all the way down to the wire. Just to point out how in the game he was till the end. He had a birdie that he actually caught on Friday and solved by Sunday with two arrests. So that's, you know, you don't see that from a lot of bigger departments. Following Thursday was his last day, so he gets a kudos and a hats off and a huge thank you from the town and the police department. Having said that, his last day was August 1st, Monday. Let's check that, Thursday, August 1st. We started taking applications and we stopped the application process, excuse me, receiving applications on August 5th, which was Monday. We shortened the time to accept applications in anticipation of getting a seat and expediting the hiring process to fill that seat at the academy, which starts September 16th. I've been in contact with the academy and it has not been looking good. And as of yesterday, it's pretty much a done deal. We will not have a seat in 2019 second class. So it looks like we're looking at January of 2020. So what I would like to do is reopen the process so we can, out of 15 applications, one out, nine will return. There's, I think, there's absolutely zero disrespect to anybody or dismissive of the ones that have applied, but I would like a bigger pool to choose from. So I'd like to reopen the process. Specifically, these nine that we've received do not need to reapply. They are still in the process. Of the six that did not return there, say we still have the right to return them and people can still come in. We'll still have to somewhat move along with the process because we still have to reserve our seat with a name of an actual person. But I think we have at least another two months before we have to worry about that.
So did you let them know that we are going to have someone, can you sign them up right now?
I tried to, yes, we have to have that name. That's all. PS ID number. That's the only way to reserve and guarantee a seat.
And so you're reopening the application window and still considering the other applicants who already have filed their applications?
Exactly. They will not be eliminated.
What will the window be now?
To hire someone.
The application window, since you're reopening that.
Probably another 10 days.
Another 10 days. Okay.
But when do you want to have someone hired by?
Mid-November.
November.
Absolutely. At the start.
Mid-November. So if that's the case, then you're going to start interviews in October?
Yeah, it all depends. Yeah, possibly early to mid-October. I mentioned this before about the possibility of Eric's new employer purchasing his vest and they did submit an offer of $495 to buy his vest. I find that to be a very good offer. I'm not going to say to get $495. Talk a little something here. And I know we're going to liquidate the asset. I think that's going to take a motion from the board and I would recommend that we take it, otherwise it sits in our storage room and collects dust. I would prepare it, voice send it over to them and then accept payment and then it would go into the general line, so.
Would anybody like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion. We accept the bid from Chesterton Police Department for the purchase of a used vest from previously trail crew officer.
Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Thank you for that. Lastly, I'd like to point out, last month I attended a kickoff for what's called the Bolt for the Heart. It's a 5K run that takes place on September 8th of this year. Bolt for the Heart, what they do is they raise funds and then purchase AED's automated external manipulators for every patrol vehicle in LaPorte County. That's, they just finished 500 and some units for the Indiana State Police and they've done other counties. LaPorte County being one of the largest counties in the state. I think it's the second largest man land wise. And I would like to invite everybody to participate. We have flyers up here by the window. There's also information on our Facebook page.
Will you be running in the event?
I will be running the event. I will be at the event doing whatever. September 8th, that's us.
And where will that be held?
Down at Washington Park. It's a great, it's a great thing. I think, you know, Jeff can attest to this and Scott, you know, generally the police are home, are first on scene a majority of the time. And the firemen come and serve, but medics, whoever comes and saves us from what we've started. So having those AEDs in our cars would be a tremendous benefit. They also have a program, if anybody is interested, where they purchase a decal that would actually go on their police windows that says this vehicle contains an AED compliments of law offices, Danny Herbach or, you know, John Doyle and Associates.
There are other sponsorship opportunities.
Yes. So if anybody, anybody has, you know, some ideas, feel free to get in touch with me and we'll get that set up.
I think Thomas from modeling is a great sponsor just to. Wonderful.
Does anybody have any questions with me today?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your support.
Mr. Bruder.
All right. Well, things are going smoothly at the park. We're wrapping things up out there. We've got 90% of the work completed. All the bigger tables are put together. All of our concrete is poured. And it's just a matter of putting the pieces together right now. So we'll mow a couple more times out there, make it look really nice before they start on the 7th. So if anybody has anything else they want to add to that, go out and look at the park and see what you think. I will get keys made for your night time, guys.
Four sets. Morning guys will open.
Oh, they said they'll open. Okay, so I'll get keys made for PD. I'm still looking for a place to dump leaves for the season. I've had a couple, a couple of good leaves that I thought were good and just haven't heard anything back yet. So it might be a last minute thing or maybe scrambling, but I'm still working on it. You guys have probably noticed the trash around town. It seems that we've had so many or a few newer residents and I don't think they know exactly how the trash works. It seems like they put it out on Monday for Friday's garbage and they're mostly big items. And I know we discussed earlier about the carpet on Black Oak. We've had several discussions with the resident.
Yeah, I actually stopped by there too.
Doesn't seem to be.
I've spoken to them.
So I've had, I got some door knockers, plus door hangers made. They're not done yet, but it's got our information. It's got Lake Shore refuse. It's got their information on there. It's got room for comment on the back and, you know, for special pickups. It lets the residents know that we do have a dumpster available for those big items. I just think it makes the town look really bad.
Absolutely.
So what's our next step? Can we do anything, Steve?
I didn't want to. What we do is we have a file for every address in the town. And each time we do something, these two properties in specific, I sent, I took pictures and sent them to the town hall over the weekend and they're going to send them letters if they have to send them already. They don't take, they print the pictures off, put the date and time of the picture and then send the letter and attach a copy of the letter to the picture and keep it in the project. That's how we started our due diligence for when it goes to the attorneys that we have documented, that we have actually done something with it. So those two, why do you say those two, there's carpeting and then two doors to the north. I think it's both sides of you, isn't it? There's a stack of old fencing there.
I stopped by the carpet. It was nice to them. We only get rid of it and it's still out there, so.
Well, I obviously.
It's not too much for us to do it.
Two weeks ago.
And Ree actually spoke with them as well and told them to do so. And that was two or three weeks ago.
They just pretty much aren't paying attention.
He's got some problems with the house that he's not fighting with the house and it's not, has nothing to do with us. It's his realtor and somebody else, so.
Because he owns the house though.
He does own the house, yes.
So he's responsible.
So I just, I know you guys have noticed it and I've noticed it, but don't want to think that we just ignore it. The problem with that is if we do pick it up and throw it in the dumpster, that opens the door for us to clean up everybody else's trash and we just don't want to get.
I know. I agree with you. Guys aren't in the trash business.
Right. I do have a new hire. We've backed up to four, four guys on the street department. His name's Frank Rebeck. He's a firefighter with me and he's on a different shift as the other two of us, so there'll be someone here all the time now, which is good. So if you see Frank out wishing the best, he's excited and we're excited to have him. So that's what I'll have.
Wonderful. Thank you. I'm glad to hear that you're taking a proactive approach to the door hangers and any other trash around town.
I should have by this meeting.
Wonderful. Thank you. Would imagine we have no report for NERC. Then it doesn't look we have any old business to attend to. So new business for Ali's Barcar, we have the Redwood Extension Parking Lot with the Walsh and Kelly invoice for $54,351.30.
Right. And y'all don't need to approve that because we already. Just inform.
So, okay. Wonderful. So then we have Mr. Doyle's invoices for Oprah Sated Projects. Which would be.
Which is informative. There are seven invoices for several different things. Y'all have copies of them. But they total $30,000.81.10. So informative.
And then the NIPSCO plan.
Wow, great.
I received an email from NIPSCO stating that we're going to be changing out our streetlights, 153 streetlights to LED in 2020. I forwarded to Jeff, the question they want to know is do we want 3,000?
3,000K or 4,000K?
4,000K. The NIPSCO representative stated that a lot of the communities go with the white, the bright white, which is the 4,000. The 3,000 is a softer.
I think the 4,000 maybe it looks too bright. I don't, and not that we don't want.
Yes, Cleveland Ave.
Would they have 4,000?
Cleveland Ave, city won with the 4,000. I would say, I mean, I.
So Mr. Pizarro, if you would.
There are communities that are.
If you would, for the record, stand up and state your name and address.
Pizarro, 201 Rainbow Trail. There are communities who are actually really involved with light pollution. And I would think that the 4,000K lights would definitely contribute to a lot of light pollution. So I would go with the three if you have the option for sure.
Makes sense.
And I would say even with our building inspector agreeing with you on that one, I.
4,000 is way too bright. It's too, too bright. You won't be able to sleep at night.
Satellites would be able to see the town.
They'll see us from way up there, that's for sure.
I suggest we find streets to go look at and before you, before you make the decision. I know we want to run with this because they want to answer.
They want to answer like yesterday, yes.
So have you seen both?
I have not seen the threes. I mean, I know the fours do light up. If you go down to Cleveland Ave, they're 4,000 Kelvin.
It's pretty bright.
It is bright, yes. However, it's a major road. But I'd just hate for us to get the 3,000 and then it ain't very bright enough.
Would the 3,000 still be brighter than what we have now?
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah, most definitely. LED technology has changed.
Now they think it's going to be bright with the 3,000.
With that being said, need to jump back. South Risky, remember a few months back we talked about, is that going to be addressed?
It has been addressed. They know about it. They trimmed the trees to go back to the power line and then that's where.
That's where.
So they're waiting, maybe until this next stack.
Jeff, is it the same for both ways? My point is I think the brightness is roughly the same, but it's the color.
It's the color. It's more the color.
Yeah.
It'd be more of a white. A soft white or a bright white?
Exactly. And the 4,000K is the standard offering. The 3,000K is an alternate. But it's up to y'all.
What is our deadline for having an answer to them by?
Yesterday. They're very, I just got this email.
Real quick, Marshal Dick, what's your, do you have anything to add to that?
So you don't want my answer because I'll go overkill. I'll say, I have a thousand.
So can we just do?
But I understand what Mr. Pizarro is saying and I agree with him on the light pollution. That is a big thing.
That would be my concern is it's.